Good evening to you all and welcome to our February 3, 2020 council meeting. Guess it's proper to wish you all a happy Groundhog's Day from yesterday. We had a good time with that event over at White Deer Park. So, we will begin this evening with our regular agenda. I'll ask the clerk if she will to call the roll.
Mayor Marchburn.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer here. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here. Thank you very much. I will now call on Councilmember Mr. Elmo Vance, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also introduce our speaker for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lady Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce my pastor of Springfield Baptist Church located on 4309 Auburn Knightdale Road, Reverend Dr. Kevin Sturdivan. He's been installed and he is a dynamic speaker. We ask for him to come now and deliver us, deliver the invocation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As has been shared, my name is Kevin Sturdivan and I have the distinct privilege and honor of being the newly installed pastor of the Springfield Baptist Church, where I've had the privilege of serving for a little over a year. It is a blessing to be with you all tonight. Let us pray. Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity, this time, to call upon your name. You are the author and the finisher of our faith and our faith looks up to you. We thank you for the privilege of being able to gather in a free nation, in a free city, where we, God, are able to call upon you and ask, God, that you would bless our pursuits tonight. That, God, you would be in the midst of this meeting, that you, God, would guide it with your wisdom, that this may be a place, this may be a community, where your love may be felt and found. We thank you, God, for the wisdom that you shall give as matters will be adjudicated tonight. I pray, God, that as those matters come before you, that you would give us soft and malleable hearts to remember the words of Scripture, that as we have done to the least of these, my brethren, we've done also unto you. I pray, God, for the law enforcement of this city and pray, God, your blessings, your protection and your peace, and pray, God, that you would allow us to continue to walk together in unity and love. Help us, God, be those who are described as the words of Scripture say, that we would be those who act humbly, who love mercy, and walk in humility with our God. Bless the furtherance of this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Sturdivan?
Pastor Sturdivan, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? Sure, without prolonging the time. I have, was born and raised in Burlington, North Carolina, and after graduating from high school, I had the privilege of matriculating through the best historically black college and university that there is, North Carolina A&amp;T State University. I graduated from there in 1998 with a degree in Broadcast Communications, was called into the ministry in 1999, ordained in 2004, and in 2009 served, began serving as the pastor of the Grooms Chapel Church in Reevesville, North Carolina, and was elected to be the pastor of the Springfield Church in November of 2018. And as was shared, began my journey at Springfield in January of 2019. So again, we look very much forward to partnering with the community and finding ways in which the faith community can support the community at large and help this region and area to be a better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome to the Garner area. We appreciate your coming out this evening. Okay, the next portion of our agenda is the time for petitions and comments. Madam Clerk, did you get any, did you receive any signups? Okay. I usually give some instructions here, but may forego that. Is there anyone here who desires to come forward at this time to make comments to the council and/or any petitions of any kind? Now would be the time to do that. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. And just before I entertain a motion, I will mention that we will need to go in closed session tonight at the conclusion of the agenda. I will ask the attorney, I guess, a little bit later for the site for that, but just so council will be aware of that. So I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Send moves with the added item of a closed session matter.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and it is so ordered and passed. Okay. All right, this evening, we do have one presentation, but before we do that, most of you know that the month of February has been designated as Black Heritage Month, and so I have a proclamation that I'd like to read this evening, whereas February has been designated as Black Heritage Month, in which we pause to reflect on the contributions of the African-American community, and whereas African-American Heritage Month gives an opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty, and whereas we join with all Americans in celebrating our diverse culture and heritage and continuing our efforts to protect democracy for all people and recognize the vital achievements of our local African-American residents. Now therefore, I can, Marchburn, Mayor, to hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as Black Heritage Month in the town of Garner, and I encourage all residents to join me in honoring the many contributions made by African-Americans throughout this region and to participate in the many educational events honoring the contribution of black Americans. And I have signed this and the town seal has been placed thereon. For those of you who may be interested, we will have some further recognition at the senior center on Wednesday, February the 5th, and we'll probably share the proclamation again at that time. Okay, with us this evening for presentation are members of the MLK Committee, and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time for a very special presentation that they would like to make. Mr. Jim Ferry. And others. Yes. That's right.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, one of the things we do as a group to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King is we have an award called the Dream in Action Award. And this is for someone who has not just talked the talk, but walked the talk, who has served, who's made a difference, who tirelessly has made this a better community. And this year's recipient, which all will recognize as being a very, very worthy person, is Reverend Susan Hobbs. And we are so proud to give you this plaque and thank you just for being you and all you have done. God bless you.
Okay, let's give her a applause.
I am extremely humbled by this award, but let me say, without the work of the committee and the support of the town and all of you, Alderman and Mayor, that have helped us throughout these years of this event, it's been wonderful. And to you, if you have not attended the event, I would encourage you to be a part of that as we grow as a community. Thank you so much.
May I read this?
Yes, you.
Dream in Action Award presented to the Reverend Susan Hobbs in recognition of your invaluable service which transforms Dr. King's life and teachings in a community service that ministers to those in need. Dr. King once said, "An individual has not begun to live until he or she can rise above the narrow horizons of their particular individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." God bless you.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce the other two committee members there, where I can?
Yes. We have Wilma McLean and we have Dwight Rogers, our co-chair. Along with me, I'm Jim Ferry. Didn't tell you who I was, I figured people would know, but maybe not.
Both retired ministers now, I believe, right? Both of you, congratulations to you. Thank you very much for coming and making the presentation. We appreciate it. Oh, yeah, I think we'd like to get a picture there, if we could, yep. Cover me up, so. Do you think so?
Yes.
Let me get in.
Bring it in.
I'll bring the mirror.
All right. We're not going to walk.
Yeah.
Will we do?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Let's try this a few times. All right, ready for take one? All right. Try one or two more. And.
We appreciate your coming out this evening. Okay, we'll now next move to the consent agenda. I will ask for a motion from the council to approve the consent agenda.
Send move.
Second.
Okay, any questions or questions about the consent agenda? I didn't ask anybody, I wanted to move an item, but I assume you do not. So, all those in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and it is so ordered. Okay. We will now move into the section of our agenda called Public Hearings, and we have two scheduled for this evening. The first one is CUDZ 1906 and CUPSP 1913, Eastern Wake Innovation Park, and the presenter will be Mr. David Banford, I believe, is that right, David? So, if you want to come forward, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'm going to read a little instruction that we use for these kinds of hearings. There are some rules governing these hearings required by law that we must follow. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it's more formal than other public hearings. It's a fact-finding hearing and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as the basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony considered, excuse me, concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. Also, hearsay evidence which is relating what some other person said or wrote and petitions of support or opposition cannot be considered. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony and council members are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of this hearing, and this is always the time when we inquire of our council members if they have had any ex parte communication with any of the applicant individuals and/or if they have any reason that they could not render an impartial verdict on this matter tonight. Are there any? Okay, hearing none, we will just simply ask that all respect the time limits on speakers and other requests to minimize repetitive testimony, if there is any, and so we'll hear from the town and its African. Oh, we do need to swear any witnesses that expect to testify, so now would be the time for you to come forward. The clerk will swear you at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a general, I'm sorry, a conditional use rezoning request with a conditional use site plan. The property is located at the southwest corner of East Garner Road and Jones Sausage Road. It's about 21.96 acres. The planning commission did review this case after a meeting on January the 22nd. This Google Street View is a picture of the rezoning and project site. This is looking south on Jones Sausage Road, and the project site is located here on the southwest corner. This is an aerial photo of the project site outlined in orange. We have East Garner Road, which is a major thoroughfare, runs along the northern boundary of the site, with Jones Sausage Road running along the eastern boundary of the site. We have, I believe, Ashland subdivision that's located here, is a single family. We do have some scattered single-family homes in this area along Jones Sausage Road, and the avenues at White Oak Town Home Development, 160 townhomes, that is under construction on this tract here directly across the street. South of the site, we do have the railroad here, it's a right-of-way of 200 feet, and south of that, we do have some heavy commercial and light industrial. So this area has a mix of uses, it's also two schools, a middle school located here to the east and an elementary school up here north of WKBC Radio Station Road. The zoning, the current zoning is split between three different zoning districts. A portion is zoned industrial two, conditional use, a smaller portion is zoned light industrial one, and another portion is zoned residential R-20. The zoning to the north is multifamily two, this is the town home development under construction. The homes along Jones Sausage Road, north of East Garner, is zoned R-20, single family. Ashland subdivision is zoned R-9, direct distributor is zoned office and institutional. And then again, south of the railroad with the properties with frontage on 70, or zoned heavy commercial service business and industrial one and industrial two. This is a list of zoning cases for this area. The oldest case that we found was from 1991. This was the old Time Warner site that's located near I-40 on East Corner Road. The most recent case was from 2005, which was a zoning near East Corner Middle School. This is a breakdown of the current zonings, which we had gone over. 2.2, 2.8 acres is currently zoned R-20, 0.66 acres is zoned industrial one, and 18.5 acres are zoned industrial two, conditional use. The requested zoning is community retail, conditional use, District C, 219. And under this proposed zoning, there's a limited range of uses and also some site conditions The next two slides will show the conditions, the proposed uses and site conditions. The community retail zoning allows about 50 different uses, and the applicant has restricted that list down to these: upper-story residential, community center, other community service, museum, art galleries, fraternal clubs and civic clubs, adult daycares, daycare centers, trade vocational schools, business schools, music, dance, art, instruction, ambulance services, government office, medical clinics, ambulatory health and emergency care, nursing care institution, churches, minor utility, telecommunications, indoor gym, spas, pools, indoor entertainment, medical office, individual, other office or general office use, hotel, motel, commercial parking, restaurants, indoor seating, restaurants with a drive-through, restaurants takeout, personal service oriented uses, repair oriented uses, no outdoor operations, sales oriented uses, indoor operations, hair beauty salons, convenience stores without fuel cells, banks and financial institutions. And just as a reminder, the community retail zoning does not allow any outdoor storage or any outdoor operation, so all uses listed here would be conducted inside of a building with the exception of the utilities, the telecommunications towers or minor utilities. Everything else would be indoor use. Also proposed, in addition to the uses, is the following condition: no more than 5% of the total square footage of all three buildings, which includes three phases, shall be used for the following uses: restaurant takeout only, restaurant indoor seating, restaurant with seating and drive-through window, sales oriented use, and convenience stores. So those uses, out of the limited range of permissible uses, are restricted to no more than 5% of the total square footage. The total square footage proposed is 300,000 square feet, so this would come out to around 15,000 square feet. Moving on to the traffic impact analysis, a TIA was required, and this proposed use is expected to generate about 3,110 daily trips. East Garner Road and Jones Sausage Road at or over standard capacity for two-lane roads without turn lanes, with turn lanes, capacity increases to 18,000 vehicles per day. 6% growth in traffic at surrounding intersections. Improvements beyond UDO required widening to address congestion at intersections, signal adjustment at East Garner and Jones Sausage Road. Eastbound, East Garner Road, the following 50-foot right turn lane on East Garner Road at Site Drive 1, 50-foot right turn lane on East Garner Road at Site Drive 2. Westbound, East Garner Road, the following 100 left turn lane on East Garner Road at Site Drive 1, 100 left turn lane on East Garner Road at Site Drive 2. This will be shown more clearly in the presentation on the site plan. Southbound, Jones Sausage Road, the following 50-foot right turn lane on Jones Sausage Road at Site Drive number three. Northbound, Jones Sausage Road, the following 150-foot left turn lane on Jones Sausage Road at East Garner Road, and also a concrete barrier along the left turn lane to separate from southbound traffic. Moving to the Garner Forward Plan, we're going to look at the future land use map and also the guiding principles. For the future land use map, the site is designated as light industrial center. This is primarily because in 2014, the portion of this project site, around 18 acres, was approved for a light industrial business park with outdoor storage. That project did not move forward. So under the Garner Forward Plan, this is still designated as light industrial center, and the plan recommends manufacturing, office warehouse type uses. Moving to the guiding principles, working places is discussed on pages 69 through 74, and staff finds that this rezoning is in support of the following. Page 68, support anticipated increase in office needs. Staff comment, this rezoning and proposed development would provide Garner with Class A professional office space. Number two of the Garner Forward Plan, page 68, attract unique commercial establishments. This rezoning and proposed development could provide a mix of office and retail service together in one location that is found in a few places around Garner, such as the South Side Shopper Building at 2339 Timber Drive, and also the building at 1401 Aversborough Road. These two-story office buildings have upper-story office with retail and restaurants on the first floor. Number three of page 69, ensure that existing regulations allow new kinds of hybrid office, retail, industrial, and even housing combinations in commercial areas of town. This is on page 69 of the Garner Forward Plan. Staff comment, this rezoning and proposed development could support this goal of mixing and combining different compatible uses, specifically office and retail and service. On page 72 of the Garner Forward Plan, it talks about developing North Garner, and this site is located within the boundary of North Garner, which was defined in the 2004 North Garner Plan. Staff comment, this rezoning and proposed development is located in North Garner, and that's generally defined as north of Highway 70 on the eastern part of town, and as you move west, it's north of West Garner Road. Zoning consistency statement, this requested rezoning from residential 20, industrial one, and industrial two, conditional use district 173, to community retail, conditional use district 219, is consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plans, Guiding Principles, and Recommendations of the Working Spaces section of the plan. However, it is not consistent with the future land use map designation of light industrial center. Therefore, this rezoning will require an amendment to the future land use map to designate the site from light industrial center to office center, which may be considered a voluntary reduction in the intensity of uses. That concludes the rezoning presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions, and Stacy will give up and give more of the details of the site plan.
Okay, so questions of Mr. Banford on the conditional use rezoning? I'll start with Mr. Dellinger on this end. None, okay. Mr. Vance?
Don't have any.
Mr. Behringer? Okay. Singleton?
Okay.
I guess you get off without any further questions, David. I guess you get off without any further questions, David. Good to see you. Thank you for being here.
And I will present the site plan conformity section for the East Wake Innovation Park. 21.96 acres, three office buildings of approximately 100,000 square feet each. The minimum lot size in this zoning district, 6,000 square feet, and you see the setbacks there as well. That is a overall site plan with East Garner Road being at the top of your screen and Jones Sausage Road being to the right. There's two stormwater devices on either end of the project with the three buildings in the middle that you'll see. Here's the conceptual drawings for the buildings. The buildings will be constructed primarily of a light red-brown brick with accents of a medium red-brown brick and tan/light gray metal panels as an accent as well. There was no open space required since this is a commercial development. There are tree coverage requirements of 10%. That's being met with 10.79% existing vegetation. There are two perimeter buffers on the site. On the western property line, there's a 35-foot buffer, and along the southern property line, there's a 25-foot buffer. Along the southern property line where the stormwater device was, there was a 30% width reduction given just in that area, so that area is 17.5 feet. Then on the other two sides, on the Garner roadside and the Jones Sausage roadside, you have 20-foot wide street buffers with street trees provided every 40 feet on average along both of those roads. Lighting for the site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this site plan. They have proposed parking. There's 1,000 spaces required based on the office calculation of one for every 300 square feet of office. So 1,000 is required, and they're proposing 1,071 spaces. The site, as you can see, does not contain any FEMA-designated floodplain. The East Wake Innovation Park is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and quantity requirements for the 1-, 10-, and 25-year storms. This development plan proposes two stormwater wet retention ponds to treat impervious surface from the site. The stormwater wet retention ponds will provide treatment for both nitrogen and all water quantity requirements for the entire development site. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this development. Connection to water and sewer will occur through existing City of Raleigh infrastructure. The site of Eastern Wake Innovation Park is on the southwest corner of East Garner Road and Jones Sausage Road, and has approximately 1,800 linear feet of frontage on East Garner Road. Right-of-way will be dedicated to provide half of a 74-foot section and additional pavement installed to accommodate half of a major collector street. Sidewalk will also be installed along East Garner Road. Two full access driveways for the site will be constructed, and a right turn lane will be provided for entrance into each. The site has approximately 900 linear feet of frontage along Jones Sausage Road. Along the majority of this frontage, additional right-of-way will be dedicated to achieve half of a 100-foot section. At the southern end of the site, a full 100-foot width will be reserved for future right-of-way dedication to accommodate the future realignment of Jones Sausage Road. There will be one right-in, right-out entrance and exit along the Jones Sausage Road frontage. Any new curb and pavement installed south of the Garner Road intersection would likely require removal and replacement by the town or NCDOT for the future grade separation at the railroad. The engineering department has requested that the developer install a ribbon-paved turn lane and submit a fee in lieu of future widening, curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the property frontage of Jones Sausage Road. The fee in lieu construction cost estimate would consist of half of the 78-foot back-to-back inside the 100-foot right-of-way. This equates to approximately 15 feet of asphalt widening plus curb and gutter and sidewalk in the existing tangent and full cost of the entire section for the realignment section. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Garner Road as a two-lane divided facility and Jones Sausage Road as a four-lane divided facility. A cost estimate for the road frontage improvements to Jones Sausage Road for which a fee in lieu will be provided must be reviewed and approved by the town prior to construction drawing approval. Additionally, the developer is required to provide right-of-way and permanent slope dedication from East Garner Road to the southern boundary to accommodate that future realignment. The bicycle and pedestrian portions of the plan call for sidewalk and bicycle facilities along Garner Road. Finally, the transit portion of the plan identifies a transit loop with bus stops along Garner Road. With the construction of half of the ultimate roadway section for Garner Road, construction of the ribbon-paved turn lane onto Jones Sausage, the provision of fee in lieu for future frontage improvements, and provision of right-of-way and permanent slope dedication along Jones Sausage, the provision of sidewalk and bicycle lanes, and the provision for a bus stop on Garner Road, the plans may be considered consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in the project area. Therefore, this project may be considered consistent with that plan. And after sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following conditions are met. One, prior to obtaining a building permit, a recomination plat must be filed and recorded. Two, prior to receipt of approved plans, the engineering department inspection fees must be paid. Three, prior to issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department. Four, construction drawings submitted to the engineering department and City of Raleigh Public Utilities will be required. Five, a cost estimate for the road frontage improvements for which a fee in lieu will be provided must be reviewed and approved by the town prior to construction drawing approval. And six, a detailed downstream sewer analysis must be completed and approved during construction plan review. The Planning Commission did review this at their January 22 meeting. With a vote of 4 to 1, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings that CUP SP 1913, Eastern Wake Innovation Park, is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And further accepted by a unanimous vote, staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan being detailed in Section 5 of your report as their own, and recommended approval of CUDZ 1906 to the Town Council. They did add a condition on that the 5% of retail sales that the applicant proposed be increased to 15%. The applicant had proposed that 5%, and there was a concern by some members of the Planning Commission that that may not be adequate due to the scale of the project, and that 15% would be more appropriate. So they recommended adding that. We did go through the exercise of explaining to him how zoning compliance permits would be issued for each tenant within the buildings, and that we look at parking at that time for each one of the tenants to make sure there is still existing parking available, and that the applicant knows as well that they would have to balance that out so that they can make full use of the building with the parking that they have on site. And there are your sample motions on pages 33 and 36 of your packets. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Also, the applicant and their team are here to answer questions as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll hear from the applicant to amend if there is any council member have a question to this president. Singleton?
Yes, Ms. Harper. The part in regards to what will be future Jones Sausage Road through here, I saw with the right-of-way, reserve right-of-way dedication, et cetera, et cetera. And there's another portion up here circled that says, "Of significant note, it should be pointed out that Part 1 of the feasibility study," which for those in audience is the feasibility study to take Jones Sausage Road out to Highway 70, is not the final design, and it's possible the final design and construction undertaken by North Carolina DOT at a future date for the realigned portion of Jones Sausage will be able to avoid conflict with the site's current proposed layout. So just the question is, do we think there's enough right-of-way there in case there's some conflict with the current layout and they've got to go further east? I mean, I'd hate to have this nice pre-development get built, and all of a sudden they're encroaching upon the development substantially. Do we think there's enough right-of-way with the 100-foot reserved for the realignment of Jones Sausage Road? I know y'all spend a lot of time on this.
Yeah. Jeff, do you want to address?
There's a drawing in here with colored lanes on here at Jones Sausage Road in yellow. I mean, it looks like the hurricane forecast map, but I think some colors are getting it, goes what the probability of the storm's going to be. So he could just confirm.
So as noted in the background section of the report, this has been kind of on the front end of the town's study. And so after their second round of reviews, we started to get some information related to plans for what our engineering firm thinks might be the appropriate alignment for Jones Sausage Road doing that grade separation. I think Chris would say that these are probably, what, 15% drawings, if that? So we don't know that the final project will follow that same exact corridor that we're being shown by our consulting team now. But that was just an early attempt to try to see how things were lining up, to see where there might be conflicts. Our consulting firm was supplied with their site plans as well. So they're trying to, you know, thread a needle, so to speak. They're doing their best to try to make everything work together, but it does show that there is a potential for some conflict down the road. But again, these are only if 15% drawings, so.
Yeah, I would just mention that I think certainly south of the entrance to their site, being the last, the bottom portion of the parking, and as you approach the pond, are probably the areas that would be most likely or have some sort of impact, if there is. So obviously, there's going to be a grade separation, so there's going to likely be some pretty good-sized retaining walls that have to be developed for an overpass over the railroad. But more than likely, the pond would have to have some modifications, and it could put some of that corner of that parking lot at risk.
And so the applicant obviously is aware of all this. All this can happen. If it, I know it pointed out in here that I think there's 1,000 parking spaces required, it's 1,071, and some of that was in case, I think they had some medical offices here in case they needed more parking spaces. But if it takes some of the parking, is there enough of the space to accommodate if you had to add parking spaces somewhere? Just asking. It takes some, do you have to add some? I'm just asking. I'm, you know, I'm making the assumption that if you took some away, you'd have to put some back.
Yeah. I guess as part of it's going to depend on, you know, how the new UDO reads in the future and what we determine our minimum parking spaces would need to be. Some of it, I think, is dependent on the applicant as to how much parking they feel they need to have to make it a successful development. We do have some tree canopy preservation areas. I don't know how much of that is excess. There might be some wiggle room or two. We could also look at satellite parking and other kinds of things to help satisfy that. So there's considerable flexibility in the parking regulations even as written now that we could make it work on our end.
You said the plans now, I think, Chris, were at 15% for this conceptual plan or study?
I would say at best. I mean, it's a real rough alignment that they go through. They've got horizontal and vertical alignment on the design, but obviously, they've got no survey data or anything. I mean, they've got, they're going off, probably GIS is the best kind of topo they've got. So it's very early, very early.
Based on the schedule we have that we, with the consultant on this, that, how much, when do we have this for the long, as far as that part of Jones Sausage Road?
For this section?
This section, yes.
That would really depend, I mean, it depends on when it gets funded. Right now, it's not funded. I think the current funding is to do design on the northern piece and construct it, but we have nothing on the southern.
This is just conceptual?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, do you have any?
No, sir.
Go this way.
I have a couple of questions regarding the sidewalk that's required along the frontage there. Does the town have any plans to continue that sidewalk on further west on Jones Sausage Road, or is it just going to be sidewalk in front of this project?
At this time, it would just be in front of the project. I don't think we have any outstanding town projects we're talking about.
Not at that time because on Jones Sausage, because you've got the railroad over here, and we wouldn't have anything nor.
Which?
So, if you're going west, did I say Jones Sausage? I'm sorry, Garner Road? I'm sorry. There's requirement for sidewalks on that segment of Garner Road in front of the project. Going west, does the town have any plans to continue the sidewalk up to Main Street?
Sidewalks are required on both sides of all collector streets with new development. We don't have a plan right now for a town-funded project to extend it, but as development occurs, we would expect sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Okay. All right.
In fact, isn't that built into our comprehensive plan in terms of sidewalks? Okay.
Basically, any collector streets would require a sidewalk on both sides.
Wonderful. Okay. And the second question is, there was one person on the Planning Commission that did not vote for approval. Did they give a reason?
The only thing that I really recall him talking about is he really did not like the parking and asked about them constructing a parking deck, which is obviously a substantial investment for them to do that. That is the only feedback that we really received on that.
Reason why he didn't like the parking?
He just thought they should have a parking deck, as best as I could tell.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Vance?
My questions have been asked, and they have been answered.
Mr. Dellinger?
It says in the summary that the project was reviewed against the town's master plan for parks and rec. Which version of that, as we just approved one not two weeks ago?
It would have been the previous version to that.
So it hasn't been compared against the most recent one we just adopted?
No. It was reviewed against the one that was active at the time that this was submitted.
Because one of the features of the existing tenure comp plan is greenway construction, and one of the major greenway quarters goes along Garner Road, one of the highest priority ones, also one that has the highest rating with regards to connectivity between residential and commerce. That gives me, connectivity seems to be a theme, but that gives me a little concern that it might interrupt or interfere with future greenway construction and paths. They're not cheap, and we like to want them to have continuity. That's a big concern. I think it should really be compared against the plan we just adopted and see if there are any accommodations that we can make so that we don't, in the future, have to go back and make other accommodations with regard to the plan we just adopted. Any comment from the developer on that?
I'm sure they'll have a comment. I will say that we, the plans get reviewed under whatever is active at the time that it is submitted. The applicant does have now, under... The applicant does have now, under, the general assembly has created a thing called permit choice, which allows them to choose the rules and regulations that were, they were submitted under, or any subsequent amendments to those plans. They could choose to go under those as well. So this was reviewed and looked at under the.
And when would they have to make that decision?
I mean, I think we have not talked about the new parks and rec and greenways plan with them, so I would guess if, for them to make a change to their plan as it stands now, that, something they would definitely want to look at before they committed to that, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it, it has the potential to just cut into pieces one of the major greenway corridors that we have approved, and I would like to think they would be accommodating to that along one of our major corridors. Is there any sustainability aspects to this with regards to LEED certification or?
That I don't know. That's something they would need to answer.
Yeah, why don't we get to the, to the applicant? Okay, anybody else for Stacy? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will now hear from those who wish to testify identified with the applicant. If you will, please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Council, thank you for making time this evening. My name is John Keener. I'm from Trustwell Property Group. I'm representing Direct Distributors, the parent company of Agri Supply in town, as well as the owner of the property that we're discussing tonight. I'm excited to be here. I will be brief. Staff has done a great job of working through and giving you the details on the site. I'd like to provide a little more color, certainly, to address some of the comments that I've heard so far. Hopefully, this presentation will help us do that. So starting, East Wake Innovation Park is not working with this guy. Mind if I stand over here?
Please, yeah, that's fine, yeah. Thank you.
Again, I think we've reviewed where the site is, talking about East Garner and Jones Sausage Road. The group that I'm with, obviously Direct Distributors and Agri Supply have been a community pillar here in Garner for a long time. Myself, I've done almost all my growing up around here in the Triangle. I've been developing in this area for 20 years in Durham, Chapel Hill, Raleigh, as well as in Garner here back in 2006. So know, know the town well, certainly. Our sponsors know it even better than I do. So we're looking very much so at the comprehensive plan, the regulations to bring forward and bring the growth that we've seen in other parts of the Triangle to Garner, and that's our, that's our chief goal here. As we go through, that, that means compliance with comprehensive plan. We've set aside and looked at from a very technical way, the first couple here for commercial development needs, supporting that additional office need. Garner is one of the few places here in the Triangle region that doesn't have a Class A office development for which the companies right here in Garner can grow into, as well as new companies can come in and experience and enjoy Garner the way we have. Attracting those unique commercial uses, new folks coming in to bring their businesses and grow their businesses in Garner, really, we feel is the most important thing to support here on the project and why it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Regulation of hybrid uses, we've talked a little bit about incorporating retail to find at least a little bit of balance. There's a lot of service retail going on in the White Oak Shopping Center. We don't want to take away from that or from the other retail around, but we would like to support the area here with commercial development, as well as bring in commercial and office uses that will be more supportive and more directed towards downtown Garner. This location, we feel like, is a key gateway to that, and one of the reasons why we're asking for rezoning from a light industrial park to what we feel would be a far more attractive, less intensive use in an office development that hopefully more supportive of the area as it grows and moves forward. The project goals that we have, over and above the comprehensive goals that we discussed now, our key goal was to bring new office to support the growth of Garner companies. In particular, Direct Distributors, about eight years ago, when they were growing out of the former funeral home they were in right here on 70 in Neversboro, they had to look at a space to try to find room for their company to grow. There was nothing available here in Garner. However, thankfully, they had the financial wherewithal, as well as the dedication to Garner, to find and build their own building here. Direct Distributors is one of the few companies that might have that ability. What we can do here with this office park is provide that space to other companies to continue that growth right here in Garner, so they don't have to go to other places like downtown Raleigh, North Raleigh, or God forbid, Cary. And this is where we'd like them to grow. This is the kind of product that would allow them to do that. The other thing that we find is key, again, is attracting, to create an attractive development and a more attractive development than the current zoning will allow. So again, that reflects back at looking at a light industrial park with large outdoor storage that would be very much supportive of a business, however, would not probably be what we want for a gateway to downtown Garner. And that brings us to the site plan. We've looked at this before, but if I was looking at that light industrial park, this is a really rudimentary site plan of what could happen here. In the middle, there's five residential homes, but it's wrapped by larger warehouse buildings, pushed right up against the street, which is what the initial setbacks would allow or the current setbacks would allow right now. We feel like designing it this way with the office park, it allows us a lot more opportunity to, one, join, create that connectivity, increase the greenery around there, but also push those buildings back from the street. As mentioned by staff, moving to an office development versus a light industrial development, it's a voluntary reduction in intensity, but we feel that provides a real benefit to the area and is very supportive of why we're asking for the rezoning. Other benefits is, as you can see, we're pushing the buildings very dramatically back from the streets. We would be allowed to be just 35 feet behind that right-of-way, but at each of these locations, we're better than 100 feet back, and in some cases substantially better than 100 feet back. It feels like this provides a nice buffer for the lower intensity development that surrounds us, even though the office is very complementary of the office that we have right across the street on Jones Sausage. Building on that, we feel the buildings are a lot more compatible with those surrounding uses because of that, rather than having large metal structures as you'd have with a light industrial development, with buildings three-story office. We're pulling architectural cues from the area, the light tan brick, that's a very traditional building veneer here in Garner, as well as right across the street. We're trying to pull in those marks to make this an easy, integrated spot for Garner to grow in, in an environment that it's very used to seeing, but as well as bringing something new to the town to accommodate that growth. Finally, addressing the greenway corridor. I've been developing for 20 years or more here. I never had the opportunity to do as much green tree preservation along major corridors. Typically, when you're doing a development, they want to cut down all the trees out front so you can see all the buildings. I feel like we've done the opposite here, having a very large substantial portion of our tree safe or existing vegetation, as well as increasing the amount of vegetation, especially along the Jones Sausage corridor, than what you see today. I'm proud of the ability to do this, and I think it's going to be a signature point for this development and also maintain a very nice inviting green corridor all the way to downtown Garner, which we think is an important, very important event. Looking at the site plan, 300,000 square feet, sounds like a lot. If it was squeezed in one building, it's very much not. This will be a phased development. It will start at the corner where we have most of the clearing, as actually happened many, many moons ago, but this will kick off the development. Our initial 100,000 square feet will be built there, and then it will slowly grow through phase two and phase three. Benefits that we have in developing it this way, primarily, we've taken that parking and we've pushed it away from the major thoroughfares, pushed it to the back of the site, so you're more oriented towards the building facades, which will properly address that corner, as well as those, the green corridor that we just spoke about. Those interconnected green spaces aren't limited right to those top corridor. We've interspersed them around the space. These small green areas will encourage people to come out of the office buildings and enjoy the rest of the site as well. Being out and about inside your workspace can only go so far. There's nothing better than getting outside. We've, we've seen that in many of our developments. We've looked at these pocket opportunities throughout the parking, even though we could probably have increased the parking a little bit, we think these green opportunities throughout the inside of the site are equally as important to the jobs outside the site. Also, to address sustainability, though we don't get any credit for them because of the orientation on the site, these green spaces also operate as rain gardens and, to some extent, minimize the large impact of heat sink areas for your parking lots, as well as provides some stormwater detention, retention abilities, though the stormwater management ponds are what fulfill all our requirements. We think these green spaces interspersed throughout still highlight the benefits and the sustainable benefits that you can have by including all of these green spaces in the parking that you see. We certainly have Mike from Stewart who could talk more about that if needed. Sidewalks, bike amenities provided along East Garner Road. Think this is a great corridor, ties it in pedestrian-wise to do our part to encourage people to enjoy the system, to take it farther downtown. But again, by increasing the, the tree safe in these areas in particular, this makes it a far more pleasant walk, and that, we think, is an inviting front step to the development that we're proposing today. We're making the same contributions to the Jones Sausage Road, so the same improvements can be enjoyed there. Once the final alignment is decided by NC DOT, should they decide to fund, most likely that's going to be many years in the future, but we're happy to provide that payment in lieu now in hopes that it will be done. Throughout the site, we're also providing all of the other recommendations that NC DOT is making now. We're providing every one that they've looked at. We've looked at those, each of the individual entrances, site two, or entrance two, entrance one, and then entrance three, all the way around on Jones Sausage Road down the way. We've looked at them as restricted access, also provided NC DOT full access data for them to understand and make the recommendations that they have for circulation and access to the site, and we've done all of their recommendations that they've asked us to make. Right-of-way dedication for Highway 70, we've made those recommendations too. We've continued to provide what staff has asked us here from the start along this. When we did get to participate with a consultant here right at the end of last year, the initial plan, they brought in the stakeholders who participated in both of those meetings, and were happy to. Looking at the way that they had it aligned and the way their initial data had put in, some recommendations from our engineers, we provided suggestions that hopefully in the future plan, when they finished it, will be included. But based on our analysis and adjusting a radius for the 45 mile an hour speed limit that's currently on Jones Sausage Road, the right-of-way that we provided here now should provide the space for the Highway 70 connector that we looked at in the future. Again, that will be determined by NC DOT's engineers in the future, but we feel like what we've dedicated here now and designed around should provide for that unless something dramatic changes. However, to address your question previously, Alderman, the, should it be worst-case scenario and it was stuck on the plan document that you saw, there'd be about nine spaces, parking spaces, that would be impacted and a little bit of adjustment in stormwater management pond in the future. Because of the impact being so minor going forward, we didn't want to push the project farther back, potential to lose additional tenants who could kick off this project for Garner for a plan that may or may not be enacted until many years in the future. So we proceeded based on the recommendations we've been given by staff and worked hard to put together here to bring the best possible plan forward, the most flexible plan. Even if we lose those nine spaces, we'd have plenty to still provide for some additional retail use or additional medical office, and we would balance that out throughout the site, working with staff, as Jeff mentioned. So we feel very comfortable that the site plan as designed can accommodate the corridor that we're very much supportive of, and based on the plan that we have now, it allows us to move forward, hopefully bring in the tenants and bring in the opportunities to grow and kick off this site. Couple of renderings for the, the concept plan in addition to the ones that were shared by staff. Again, we're trying to build with a brick and the architectural details that have very much at home here in Garner, as well as bring in some elements that are new to show that this is Garner taking the next step and hopefully providing just as innovative, just as accommodating space as you could find in North Raleigh or in other parts of the Triangle, right here in Garner where we think it belongs. There's a number of human-scale elements. Again, we mentioned the planning upfront, also bringing down the scale, the articulation of the building as well, but the canopy to make those entrances very much noticeable to traffic, but very accommodating and inviting to pedestrians and those coming in to work and enjoy the day. Stepping back, we talked about having that green corridor. Looking down to the right of your screen, you see the view down, East Garner, towards downtown. You see dramatic trees up front, and you see just the three-story office building there, pushed significantly back from the street, again, to maximize that, the green space out front and still give the, the parking that's needed in back, but provide the corridor that hopefully will be a great gateway to downtown. Stepping back and looking again at, at the fully developed plan, you see the second and third phases continue to push back from the street, and you see that even with the improvements down for Jones Sausage, the accommodation of the room for the green space that's there, as well as, again, the emphasis on the green space running along East Garner Road. With that, just a little bit about the sponsors. You know Direct Distributors well. I'm happy to answer any questions about Trustwell Property Group you may have, but really, the most important part of talking today is just talking about the site plan and the growth that we hope to bring to Garner. So at that point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Sir?
Ms. Singleton? You showed us phases one, two, and three of your buildings. Building one being right here in front of us. Per DOT, you had to make, you would be required to make the street improvements on Garner Road for both entrances one and two when you built.
Phase one, yes, sir.
So all the road improvements would be done on Jones Sausage and Garner Road as phase one is completed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because well, your phase showed, didn't show the other driveway. I just made the assumption, I thought you get to make all the improvements at one time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. I think I read somewhere, is the proposed build-out on this 2025? Did I read that correctly somewhere?
Dependent on pre-leasing, it may go about five years or so. As things come by, banks want pre-leasing in order to provide financing for them. So about a five to six-year build-out is fairly good.
I'll go to Mr. Matthews if he has any questions. Okay, go to my right, Sperringer.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
It seems like the site, the constraints on the site and the building heights are related to the parking accommodation, the amount of parking you can fit in. Because my initial sort of question is, why not go more vertical? I think we're in a position where we want to continue to optimize the limited resource of space we have in Garner, and if you look in Raleigh, they're able to squeeze X, Y, and Z on a fairly small piece of land and have that parking deck, because there's a lot of parking lot. And you go over to North Hills and you can see where they can, and I know we're not North Hills. But I'm really a strong advocate for us to go more vertical, and I think for this particular type of property, there's the opportunity to go more vertical, and you already have a phased mentality. I just think it's a, has the potential in 2015, 10, maybe even 10 years, look back and say, we could have done more and generated more commercial revenue for the town from that property, because this will be here for 30 years. And it's not a bad project. It, I just don't think it maximizes that quarter to downtown, you know, on that side. And I wonder if, I know y'all are ready to go. I know you're ready to go. But it really would be nice to see just hire, go six, phase in another six, put it in a deck and fund that stuff, because we just have a finite amount of real estate in that, in this part of town. And the higher density with, along those transit corridors is what we want, to generate that quasi-urban feel, because the less we're able to develop these types of, because the zoning change is great, it's fine, this is what we need to do. This is the type of space we need. But if we don't maximize it, we then turn and having to shift that burden again back onto residential instead of just growing. It has the hint of missed opportunity to me to really kind of take Garner. It, it takes us a step forward, but I feel like it takes us into Cary of, of the mid 2000s versus the Garner of, of 2030. feel like it takes us into carry of the mid 2000s versus the Garner of 2030. That's kind of all I've got to say.
I mean, respectfully, we would love to build more, wholeheartedly, honestly. I think the first phase of this and being phased allows us the opportunity that if the market does come and want to drive that, I'll be back in front of you for the second and third phase to ask for more, certainly 100%. I hope for that success.
And with regards to, I guess, two things, the park, the Greenway Plan, would you all be willing to look at that and see, because it's going to be a major quarter, I don't know that there are any improvements that you might necessarily need to make, but I think it'd be helpful to talk with Parks and Rec to see kind of what those plans were, to kind of integrate, because you have green and you have these other elements. And the other was with the bus stop on the site plan, it was mentioned in the presentation for the site plan. I guess that's committed to being a part of this property or not?
There's two, there's two bus stops actually on other portions. I believe that's part of the payment in lieu. That wasn't part of the initial packet, actually, there was no mention of bus stops before, so it hasn't actually been discussed. I'm not sure why it was on the slide to be completely honest with you, but I believe part of the, I'm happy to portion a payment lieu for a future one on Jones Sausage as part of our payment lieu.
Yeah, I mean, we had a presentation at the last meeting where they're actually increasing the capacity and going bidirectional on the loop we have and this type of development. If you want to connect the rest of Garner to downtown Raleigh and other parts of Garner, again, it reduces traffic, because people can get to the property, and so I think that's a good addition. Those are my questions and thoughts and concerns.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Keener.
Appreciate it.
We'll hear from other members of the applicant's party if there's anybody else who wants to testify this time. Okay?
Any others in public as well?
Yeah.
No.
You state your name and address if you will.
My name is Eric Keener. Address is 100 Park Low Street, Kiran, Garner. I'm here representing ownership of the parcel. I think that John did a fantastic job with his presentation and really showed the spirit of what we hope to achieve. It's not every day that you get to pick your neighbors, but on top of that, you normally don't get to pick what their house looks like or what the landscaping looks like either. The Partlow family, direct distributors, and all of Agri Supply were committed to Garner. I don't have to tell you that. Committed to Garner for a very long time. We want what's best for Garner. This was an opportunity to help Garner advance into that future, and we were able to do it in such a way that we firmly believe that it beautifies Garner. There is a ton of green space here. It picks up the same brick elements that we utilize on our headquarters building and that you see around town. It brings the professional development that we see around the rest of Wake County here to Garner where it's belonged for a very long time. We see a lot of traffic pass Garner by to go to other parts of Wake County, and it drives us crazy why people want to sit on I-40 to do that when we can provide a fantastic, hospitable, professional home for them right here in Garner. That's what we asked John to do, and he executed on it with the rest of the team that you see here brilliantly, we think. A few years from now, I think people will drive by this site, maybe even see it for the first time, and wonder why they've never noticed it before. The building that you see up there on that slide looks like it's always been there. It's got all those elements of Garner, and we are delighted to propose it to you in front of council. So if there are any questions from property ownership, from Agri Supply, direct distributors, I'm happy to answer those for you and represent the best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Keener. No questions for this gentleman, okay? Thank you very much. Okay. If the applicant doesn't have any other persons, we'll recognize members of the public for now to speak, and then we will recognize those, if there are those here who wish to speak in opposition to the project. Am I on track, Mr. Attorney, so far? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, please come forward and state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Jimmy Jackson. I live at 2015 David Lane. Been a resident of Garner for 50 years.
Yes, sir.
My hair shows it, but I've got more than one of our council members. First of all, all you council members, thank you for being willing to serve. Going through all those details, I admire your patience. I'm sorry, I don't have that patience anymore. We're very lucky that we have somebody that's willing to go and put forward the expense and what they are proposing, and something that will be so visually and economically good for Garner. It is such a huge upgrade. This will be so much better than having a bunch of warehouses sitting there, is one of the first things people see when they come to Garner. This council did a lot of good work a few years back, and we got a Wake Med, we got Cabela's and whatever. With what the Partlos are trying to do there, you're moving some of that over to Old Garner Road, and with this visual, looking so much better, think of, hopefully this will spread on back down the rest of the way toward the older part of town, and it will be such a big improvement. I appreciate the comments that something that Mr. Dellinger's made about Greenways and so on and so forth. They seem to have gone out of their way to provide more than a lot of people would. Let's don't make them jump through too many hoops, because we missed a lot of things over the years, because sometimes we were difficult to deal with. I hope you'll support this. It's good for Garner, and it's something Garner can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate that. Anybody else wish to speak in favor?
May, Mr. Marshall, real quick, just a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want, I just want more of this. That's what I want. Like, I want more. And I hope if you, as you phase this, we can find ways to work to get more, because you're absolutely right. It's what we need here. We need those opportunities for, so people don't have to drive halfway across the county to expand here and grow here. I don't want to get you the wrong impression. I just want more.
Okay, come on forward, sir, if you will. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Aaron Frank. I'm a land planner with Womblebon Dickinson. For the record, it's 555 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh. I appreciate you taking just a few moments. I'll be brief. I represent Morrison Associates at 803 Morris Drive, longtime corporate citizen located just a couple hundred feet to the south. And we are here this evening to request a deferral of this application. The reason why I am before you is because we did receive notice for this application just late last week, and we would like additional time to consider this application and understand the impacts. We are coming into this application very recently. While the application does note that we were mailed for the community meeting, we did not receive, for whatever reason, a letter at that time, so we are just seeing this application for the first time in the last few days. So with that being said, I do want to just stress that, you know, this is a good opportunity for some meaningful input. We would like to be able to provide ours into this process for the zoning as well as the condition used site plan. So we do request that you defer the application to allow for some of that dialogue to continue. With that, I appreciate your time, and that's all that I have.
Any questions for this gentleman? Let me just ask you, this, I think this has probably been in the works for some time. I understood you to say that this is sort of the, I mean, this is all fairly new to you in terms of the details of this, of this plan and this application?
That's correct, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any others who wish to speak to this issue, pro or con, from the audience? Okay, seeing, excuse me, seeing or hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Well, unless you're thinking of deferring this, you want to continue the hearing to that kind.
Yeah, okay.
And you can close the hearing later.
Yes, okay. All right, I'll hear from council on that issue. I think we've had good testimony to support this, this project, but you've heard a request for consideration of deferral. So before I close the hearing, if anybody wishes to speak to that, I'll let you do that, and then I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it's been an excellent presentation. I think I agree with Mr. Jackson, and I know the Partlow family, they started out in Garner and small, and they grew, and they grew to the bigger complex, and then their corporate office is where they're at now. And I think this is going to be an excellent opportunity. It's going to kind of pave the way for future development in, to the Garner area. I think they've done their due diligence and presented a great presentation, answered all of our questions, and they're open for some things that council members were interested in, in future growth, and very receptive to that, and that's a positive. And I think that they've done all we have asked of them, and speaking for myself, I'd assume as we go ahead and move on and vote on this tonight and move forward with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, just have a few questions in reference to the public outreach portion and the mailing of the invitations to the impacted property owners. Can the staff speak to that process, and if they know if the property owners were notified of this public meeting? Is it possible that, to have a response to that question?
Mr. Banford, can you address that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
It was in reference to the public outreach or the public meeting process in which the property owners were informed of or told that this public meeting was going to take place in which this particular project would be presented and to voice their concerns at that time. Do we know whether Morrison Associates was made aware at the time of the part of mailing list?
They were on the list that we provided to the applicant. So there's two notifications. There's the neighborhood meeting notification done by the applicant, and that list is the same list that we use for the public hearing. And so we send out the public hearing notification list, I believe, no less than 10 days before the public hearing. That's when it has to be mailed. And depending on where that goes, it may take a couple days. So to answer your question, they should have been on the list. The contact is whoever's on the tax records. So whatever name and address is on the tax records for Morrison Associates is where that letter would have gone.
Okay.
I don't have that.
Is the property posted?
Yes.
Yes. Next question is in reference to, for those individuals who did, who were not on the, who were not on the mailing list, is it, is it required that the town places a ad in the paper to let them know that, or applicant places an ad in the paper to let them know and notify them and do the best due diligence possible to notify the property owners?
So we, we are not required to put an ad in the paper. We're required to post a sign, which we did. We're required to send out letters within 300 feet, and we're also required to post the public hearing on our website, on the Town of Garner's public notice website. So no to putting an ad in the, in the paper. So the only public hearing we are required to post in the paper would be annexations, and that's what we do for, for those.
Mr. Vance, I'm sorry, I had access to the packet back here. And Morrison Associates was on the mailing list for the neighborhood meeting, and those letters appeared to have been sent out back in August, because the meeting, it looks like the letters were sent out on August 14th, and their neighborhood meeting was held August 28th.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the map, Morrison Associates located on the other side of the railroad tracks in, because it would, it seems just to me that your concerns are actually probably more relevant with the realignment of Jones Sausage Road than this particular project. That, just looking on the map, that seems where you might be particularly impacted versus this specific project. That's just kind of what I'm seeing on the map there.
Council member, yes, that is the correct location, 803 Morris Drive, which is to the south, so we are kind of the backyard neighbor. Our access is via 70, not Garner, so we wouldn't be passing the site on a typical day to see that posting. But we are interested in both the application with respect to the development on-site as well as the development that is ancillary as off-site infrastructure improvements such as Jones Sausage Extension.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. If there's no other question right now on this, I want to ask Mr. Baggett. I meant to do this earlier. I'm inclined to want to hear from our economic development director, just so that he could speak to the impact of the, economic impact of this. Can I do that at this juncture of the meeting, or am I too late on that?
No, you're not too late.
Okay. Mr. Stallings, I know you're out there. Would you come up and give us comments or your assessments about the potential economic impact of a project like this on our good town?
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. I don't know if I'll have too much to add anymore than what's already been said tonight. I think one of the key things that we are trying to do in the, in the economic development department is diversify our local economy. And I think this is a type of product that frankly, we don't have here in the Town of Garner that will offer up new opportunities, will allow us to bring new companies in, but also for growth of existing companies, one of which we lost a year or two ago, is a company that was looking for office space. And unfortunately, once you get above about 10, 20,000 square feet, there really isn't large office space in Garner to be had. So they had to move out. We will see other leases come due in Garner, and so being able to have this product to offer existing companies will be an asset. I think other things that will help us as we work in downtown specifically is to have this as a comparable for the pad property. So this being office space, office space being something that the Downtown Garner Association is looking at trying to bring there, I think will allow us some numbers to work with and can helping other developers see the potential that is there. And I think finally, it's going to help us have a, a new perception in the triangle, and hopefully people will look at us with new eyes and see that Garner is transitioning and bringing in a new class of product that will allow companies to continue to grow. And as we see more and more companies trying to push their office spaces out towards where their employees live, it makes a whole lot of sense that we would be the gateway into Raleigh and hopefully be able to capitalize on that movement and keep those folks from driving up and down I-40 to RTP and elsewhere right here in our town. So I think it is a great opportunity for the town to diversify our product offering and allow for future companies to come and ones that are here to grow.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have a question, Mr. Stallings? Thank you, Joe. Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, I'm going to ready to close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? We vote for the rezoning first, I believe, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, in regards to CUDZ 1906, Eastern Wake Innovation Park, I move that the Town Council found that although the rezoning request is partly inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan as detailed in Section 5 of the staff report, it is reasonable in the public interest, because it will likely allow and provide an opportunity to attract and develop unique non-residential establishments to our town. Therefore, I move further the Town Council Ordinance 2020-4042, approving the rezoning request, CUDZ 1906, and in doing so, also amend the town's comprehensive growth plan from designating the subject property identified previously as light industrial center to an office center.
Okay, motion been properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, several, I believe, Mr. Matthews, second. Okay, any further discussion, comments, questions before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion for the rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? I hear none, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, now I entertain a motion for the, for the second portion of this, this process.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to CUP SP 1913, Eastern Wake Innovation Park, move that we find it consistent with the town plans and ordinances, and move the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7. This report is our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria, Section 30. find the application meets the 10 permit criteria, Section 3.14. D, and therefore approve CUP SP 1913, the Eastern Wake Innovation Park, with six specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Terrible. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. And it is so ordered. I might just comment very quickly publicly. I thank all of you for your good presentation this evening. Commended counsel for the action they took. I think it's going to be a good thing for our town, and we look forward to seeing this project completed as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay.
And there'll be a nice compliment to this project when we develop our park property across the street.
That's right.
There'll be side lots on that park property also going down toward downtown. So
You're exactly right, yeah.
Be a nice compliment.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. We're going to move to the second item on our agenda. Mr. Banford, I believe, is up again. This is CUDZ 1912 and CUP SP 1905, New Rand Road. Is that you, David? Okay, please come forward.
Do we need to be sworn in for this one as well?
If you were sworn in, I think that'll suffice.
Still good.
The applicants for this case were not sworn in.
Oh, okay. Are the applicants here now? Yeah. Please come forward if you will. I'm sorry. And be sworn, if you expect to get testimony. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, David.
Sure. Mayor and members of council, this is another conditional use rezoning and a conditional use.
Conforming to the public hearing, I want to do that. I'll make sure. Thank you very much.
And a conditional use subdivision request. The site's located at 699 New Rand Road. The total acreage is less than an acre. It's .81 acres. The request tonight is to rezone it from R-15 general use to R-9 conditional use District 225. Last March, the property was under a different ownership, and there was a rezoning case for the same tract, zoning case Z-19-01. At that time, that was a general use request, and the property of the same tract was rezoned from R-20, single family, to R-15 in order to subdivide the property into two lots at that time. Since then, the property ownership has changed again. So the proposal tonight is to rezone it to R-9 conditional use to subdivide it into three lots. It's still one lot, so it never was subdivided into two lots. Planning Commission did review this at their meeting on January 22nd and did recommend approval. This is a map of the rezoning site outlined in orange. It is an infill site. At one time, there was a single-family structure on the house. It was in very poor condition, and that structure was removed, and the site was cleaned up under the previous ownership. The site does back up to Preakness Place subdivision off of New Rand Road. Again, the current zoning is R-15, Preakness Place, and also the subdivision to the north, the zone R-9 conditional use. This area is inside the town limits with water and sewer. To the south, there is a small gap in the town limits where water and sewer is not currently served, and those properties are R-20 and R-15. I believe Foley Station, I believe that's the name of the subdivision down here, that's zone R-9. To the northwest, we have some townhomes along Kentucky Drive, and that zoning is multifamily one. So this area has a mix of different residential zoning districts. The subdivision north of Preakness Place was rezoned in 2004. Preakness Place was rezoned in 2015, and this site was rezoned last March in 2019 from R-20 to R-15. The current zoning is single-family. This district allows stick-built or modular homes. Minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet, and density is around 2.9 units an acre. The requested zoning is R-9 conditional use, C-225. The R-9 district allows minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet or a gross density of around 4.84 units per acre. Since this is a conditional use request, the applicant has proposed some conditions, and we'll get to that on the next slide. This is just a comparison chart between the existing and proposed zoning, the dimensional requirements, minimum lot size, front, side, and rear setbacks, and density. So the R-9 general use zoning allows a small range of maybe 10 to 15 different uses. The applicant is proposing to restrict the use to only single-family detached. In addition, the following conditions are proposed, and this would apply to the construction of the homes on each of those three lots. Number one, each house will have a minimum heated floor square footage of 1,800 square feet. Number two, each house will have a two-car garage, screened-in porch, or unheated sunroom, and a deck or concrete patio, minimum 120 square feet. Number three, each house will be constructed of hardy plank, masonry, or vinyl siding, minimum gauge .045 on at least 80% of each side. Number four, each house will have a masonry foundation with a crawl space for at least 70% of the foundation area, not including the garage, or a stem wall slab foundation with a minimum height of 12 inches with brick, stone, veneer on the front elevation. All foundation sides without brick or stone shall be purged or textured. So in meeting with the applicant, we gave them some conditions that were used in this vicinity and also the conditions for Preakness Place. So their intent is to construct homes that are compatible and similar in construction with the adjoining single-family developments. Moving forward to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this area is designated as medium-density residential. And under this designation, recommended density is between 2.5 to 5 units an acre. The requested zoning R-9 would fit within that density range. In addition to the future land use map, we also look at the guiding principles. We look at living spaces in the Garner Forward Plan, which is discussed on pages 63 through 68. Staff finds that this rezoning is in support of the following part of the plan. Garner Forward states Garner recognizes that its housing stock is aging and that it could be more diverse to attract younger residents and retain older ones, page 63. Staff comment, this rezoning provides for new residential single-family development, which will add new housing stock to Garner. Under living spaces, number two, the plan says favor infill housing, especially in North Garner, to support the ongoing redevelopment that is already occurring. Even though this site is technically not in the boundary of North Garner, this is infill development. This rezoning provides the highest and best opportunity for development of this infill lot. Again, the lots around it are developed at R-9 density. This is a lot that is .8, I think, 81 or 88 acres in size. Number three, preserve and protect Garner's existing housing stock on page 66. This rezoning provides specific conditions to address housing construction quality on these three lots, so that it is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of square footage size, character, and appearance. This is the zoning consistency statement. The requested rezoning from R-15 general use to R-9 conditional use District C-225 is consistent with Garner Forward's future land use map and is also consistent with the guiding principles for living spaces. The rezoning, R-9 is also compatible with the surrounding zonings in the area as well. That concludes the rezoning presentation, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. And then I will move into the details of what's proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Banford. Counsel, questions regarding Mr. Banford's presentation? Start down here. Craig?
Yes, sir. Not this time.
I have a curiosity question, so I'm learning on the fly here. Was there, is there a reason it was going for the rezoning instead of keeping the zoning and asking for deviations? Is there any substantive or material difference in keeping the zoning and asking for the deviation?
I'm not sure if this answers your question, but rezoning is the only option to increase the density or reduce the lot sizes. So a deviation is an option under the planned residential development, which are larger developments in over 15 acres.
Thank you.
Others? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you, David.
So moving forward to the actual proposal, this site's .81 acres. The number of lots proposed are three. Again, this is one tract. The proposed use is one single-family detached home on each lot. Our UDA also allows the construction of accessory buildings that would come in either at the time of the home construction, or that could be done at a later time in the future to add a barn, a shed, or a garage. Since this is three lots, this is what's called a minor subdivision. So the requirements of a major subdivision would not apply, such as open space and parks, landscaping and buffering requirements, stormwater management, parking, and lighting. So those requirements that you typically see in a larger subdivision would not be required here. This site does not have any FEMA floodplain or upperium buffers, according to our map. The site has access to water, water and sewer. And I will also, I forgot to make note that under the previous ownership last year, the site was annexed. So they did file annexation petition at that time. So this site is currently inside the town limits. So sewer access will be from the rear. This is an easement that was put in place as part of Preakness Place subdivision. And then public water is along New Rand Road. So water and sewer would be required for each of those three lots. So this is the proposal here, is to subdivide that one lot into three. And the reason for the shape of the lots in this area is to get the lots down to touch the sewer easement. So all three lots physically touch the sewer easement. If the top lot went straight across and ended here, City of Raleigh would have required a sewer main extension up to that top lot. And this proposal is acceptable to them, is to configure the lots so that they touch the sewer easement in the rear. The proposed rezoning and density are within the recommended range of the medium-density category, which is 2.5 to 5 units an acre. The Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not provide any recommendations for New Rand Road. Open space, and conforming with Parks and Rec, no additional recommendations for the site. Therefore, this project may be considered to be inconformity with Parks and Recreation, Open Space, and Greenways Master Plan. After sufficient review, staff finds that this project as now proposed conforms with the regulations of Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following condition is met. And this is not currently in your staff report, so this is something that we added in later. Prior to obtaining a building permit, plans for any required road improvements will be submitted to the Engineering Department for review and approval. So when the sites are developed, there will be some road improvements along the frontage there. Planning Commission did review this at their January 22 meeting. With a unanimous vote, they confirmed staff findings in Section 7 that this proposed subdivision is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And they further accepted staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, being detailed in Section 5 of this report, as their own and recommended approval of CUDZ 19-12 to the Town Council. A couple notes. It was unclear at the time of Planning Commission meeting as to whether or not the frontage improvements along New Rand Road were required. It has since been determined that Section 3.5J of the Unified Development Ordinance applies and requires that improvements be installed. And finally, staff's recommendations for rezoning requests, CUDZ 19-12, and minor subdivision, CUP SP 19-05, conforming are highlighted in the motion worksheet in the next section. So that concludes my presentation. The applicants are here to answer any questions as well.
Just before they do that, counsel, any questions for Mr. Banford? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Banford. And we will hear from the applicant next. Or Jeff, do you have something?
If I can just clarify, there are two, two conditions in your packet. So the one that David read to you would be adding a third. The other two were just standard ones that prior to first building permit, the water and sewer fees need to be paid, and that prior to issuance of the building permit, the fee and the parkland dedication. So just want to point that out. So when you get to the motion, it's actually three-site specific conditions.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Treesburg. Okay. Gentlemen, anybody want to make a presentation? Who's going first?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, Mike Nedriga, 1013 Open Field Drive, Garner. Thank you for considering the rezoning for the property. We appreciate the time in looking through the presentation, and we sincerely look forward to the opportunity to building on these three lots. We desire to have them be in harmony and consistent with the surrounding subdivision. And again, thank you. We appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions for the gentleman? Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. No questions there. Members of the audience or public who desire to speak to this issue, either pro or con? Sure. Sure. Good evening, sir.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. My name is Grady Stevenson. I live on the south border of the project in question here.
Did you give us the actual address?
Seven oh-one New Rand.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to thank these gentlemen, they had an informational meeting on January the sixth, and I got a lot of my questions answered, and I appreciate that. Really, the only concern I've got, and I'll work that out with them, is my driveway will have to be relocated. But they told me they would work with me on that. And also, I don't know if this is a requirement or not, but it would be nice to have like a vegetation, evergreen, you know, area on the border, but I don't know if that's, can be done or not, but it would be nice to have sort of a barrier there. But those were the only two concerns I had.
I mean, just go ahead.
I've had conversations with them, so.
Stevenson, you were here last year when this came up, because you mentioned about your driveway, I remember.
Yes, yes, sure did.
Yeah, same thing, so this is taken care of, we're working with them, and it's all to relocate your driveway, it'll be taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Have you discussed the other issue?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's very nice when you can work out those things in advance. Very good. Okay, any other comments, questions by counsel? Any other persons desire to comment on this? Okay, and we're going to close the public hearing and call for a motion. Who desires to run there? You want to go, Mr. Vance?
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of CUDZ nineteen-twelve dash six-six, six-nine-nine New Rand Road, finding consistent with the comprehensive plan and approve. I move that the town accept the staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, detailed in Section Five of the staff report as our own, and I therefore move that the Town Council adopt ordinance number two-zero-two-zero-four-zero four-three, approving rezoning request CUD dash Z dash nineteen dash twelve, as it is reasonable and in the public interest, because it is likely to allow household living and supporting daycare uses that are attracted to younger families and children, as well as older residents looking to maintain private but smaller outdoor spaces, allow adequate buffers and usable spaces that help present, preserve, and protect adjacent housing stock, allow development of the, of an appropriate density of housing in the area in which it is located.
Is there a second to the motion probably made?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Behringer, second. Any other comments, questions for counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no? And there is none. The, so we will now vote on the CUP portion of this. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept CUP SB nineteen-dash-oh-five dash six-nine-nine New Rand Road, find consistent with the plans and approve. I move that the council approve the staff, the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section Five of this, of this report as our own, and find the application meets the ten permit criteria in Section 3.14.1D, and therefore approve CUP dash SB nineteen-dash-oh-five six-nine-nine New Rand Road with the two specific, three, the three specific conditions to be listed on permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, okay, have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Singletary. Any other questions, comments before we vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposition? No, and there is none, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you for your presentations, and we wish you well as you begin to develop this piece of property there. Forward to seeing what you put there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel, okay. We'll move along. We sit down during about nine, but I think we can move along at this point in time. So any new or old business that needs to come before the group? I'm not aware of any. Mr. Manager, you are.
No, I'm not aware of any additions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Committee reports, are there any committee reports? Hearing none. Manager reports, so we're back to you, Mr. Dickerson.
We have the Garner Dico, and we also are going to do a BRT update. The person that I think was going to do that is not here anymore.
I was going to cover that, Mr. Dickerson.
Okay, so you're going to cover that, okay.
We just wanted to let counsel know that we're going to have a public meeting regarding the BRT Southern Corridor on the twentieth of February from four to seven at the Senior Center, and ahead of that, counsel will get a preview of that at your eight, meeting on February eighteenth. But we wanted to go ahead and let you know about the public meeting, so you could put it on your calendar, and let you know you'd get a staff update on the BRT project on the eighteenth.
Why don't you, most people here probably know, but for the public, BRT stands for?
Yeah, Bus Rapid Transit, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
This will be specific to the southern line that will come from downtown Raleigh to the north-south station area of Garner.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hodges and I were in a meeting last week where this item was discussed, some campo meeting that we attended. Thank you, John. Okay, anything else there?
A few more reports. There will be early voting at the Avery Street Gym Recreation Center, February thirteenth through the twenty-ninth, for some primaries from other areas. We don't have anything here in Garner, but all of the voting stations are required to be open pretty much the same time. The Lake Drive project will be having a public meeting that will be at Fire Station One, and I have the time, six to seven. What was the date?
Seventh. February eleventh.
February the eleventh, okay, February eleventh, at Fire Station One from six to seven, just to receive public comment for that road improvement that the town's going to do around the Highway fifty bridge replacement that.
Six to seven, February the eleventh, right?
Yes.
Firehouse, okay.
Yeah. That's, and that's in the training building behind Fire Station One. Broadway Voices will have a concert on February fifteenth. And then I was going to get Chris to give you an update on the Rec Center and any other timber, whatever else you need to.
Yeah, I'll start with the Timber Drive. As you, as you may remember, we had spoken about the Timber Drive sidewalk projects that is coming up, and I had talked to you about the current cash flow issues that DOT is having and deferred reimbursement request. When we initially were approached by DOT, they were estimating that the reimbursements would probably be in May two thousand twenty or shortly thereafter. After we got counsel's green light to move forward, we got more information back from DOT, and they have changed that from a May two thousand twenty estimate to an undetermined future time. So we needed to confirm whether or not they have requested concurrence from the town on whether they are still comfortable moving that project forward with an undetermined reimbursement date.
President, you was heading Chris, I'm sorry, the?
Timber Drive sidewalks.
We're going to get reimbursement for along the line. Do them.
Yes.
Give the sidewalks going, like, gosh, I believe the.
They just cannot commit to a timeline right now, and they're reevaluating that on a regular basis.
Yes, move forward.
To go forward, we will just have to wait out when the reimbursement comes, right?
Right. Okay.
Okay, do we need to formally take action on that, or just a?
I think just giving me the green light to respond back to them with a, with a letter stating that counsel has been made aware of that.
Okay. I'm hearing consensus on that, counsel, is that right? Yeah, okay. I think you've got a green light for that.
Okay. And then as far as the Recreation Center, we're continuing to make good progress on the US seventy improvements. As you may have seen, they've pretty much completed the left turn lane heading eastbound into the rec site, other than the final lift of surface. They've moved from working in the median now, starting Friday and today, moving on to the on-ramp from fifty. So they have, I think they started pouring concrete out there today and plan to hope to finish the rest of the concrete installation tomorrow. Got some good weather. Then it will be basically down to just the guardrail installation, which is, we've got to get some utilities relocated to do that portion. But the surface course along US seventy and Montague will just basically be dependent on the weather. Montague specifically, we were, again, planning to hold off on doing that last course until after they do the pond repairs. That is the one thing that is currently a little bit in flux. So they, they're working with a separate contractor to get that done. They're trying to get that schedule finalized this week. And we've asked them to prioritize the Montague Pond first, so that we can get Montague Street paved.
How does that impact the timeline now?
Right now, we are still looking at mid-February.
Are you talking about for finishing the roadwork?
Yes, and then, as far as the building's concerned, they are finalizing all the punch lists. They're practically done. They were trying to schedule the architect to come in for a final walkthrough to confirm all the punch list has been addressed. There's still some landscaping that needs to be done, that's, that's not part of that contract that we're also coordinating, but for the most part, most of the work inside the building is wrapping up.
We're expecting furniture to move in this week?
Yeah, I think the only thing was, was, there had been some prior roof leaks, and they were working very hard on getting those rectified late last week, and I've, I've not heard today whether they found any, if that addressed all those concerns.
I saw, I saw Al yesterday at the Groundhog Day event, and he said he checked and did not notice any leaks in the area where there were previously leaks. And so I think Wednesday is when we expect furniture to.
Wednesday through next Tuesday.
So that's on a separate contract, so that's a, that's a good sign.
So again, the main thing that's kind of holding up the final thing is the, is the roadwork?
Yes, and the ponds.
And, yeah, okay. All right, thank you for that report.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Was that everything, Mr. Manager? Okay. Mr. Baggett, do you have any attorney reports?
No, thank you.
Counsel reports, I'll start, I don't know, where do you start? I'll start with Ms. Behringer here, and we'll work our way around.
I just have a couple of questions, and Mr. Hodges may have the answer for me here on this one. Several years ago, and pretty consistently until the last recession hit, we set aside money annually for beautification projects, and we sort of just dropped that at the recession. Has that been addressed as far as bringing it back? Has there been any discussion about that going forward? And if not, could we have some discussion made with the Planning Commission?
So I, I'm not, I think we need, could have some discussion about what type of projects you're interested in doing. At one time, the Planning Commission also dealt with some of those beautification-type issues, but with the type of workload and the scope that we've carved out for Planning Commission now, I'm not sure that would necessarily be where that would be housed, but I think we can talk with you about what you, what you're looking for and figure out how we want to proceed with that.
I would like to do that, thank you. And the next thing is, do we have dates for the retreat?
We do not have that yet. We're talking about it and planning it, but we do not have actual date for that yet.
We have an idea, not February, please.
Okay, we will take that under consideration. Not February. Probably likely looking at a March timeframe anyway, but we haven't, we haven't come up with the actual dates.
Were you getting ready to say something, Mr.?
When we talked about it with you all at the last meeting, there were actually several different things that we were sort of cobbling together in a, sort of parts and pieces that might have looked something similar to what would have been all-in-one retreat in previous years. And so it kind of depends on which, which part of that, and we're going to try to bring back to you all a, a complete schedule with dates for all of those things that you can plug in. There was, one, one of the things we had talked about doing was a Davenport update and some financial information at the March thirty-first work session, and one date that we had kicked around was extending that to do some of the group dynamic type, you know, new, new group working together type of retreat, and maybe just make that a full day instead of just the work session in the evening. But that may or may not work out, and we also have not lined up a facilitator for that yet, so that's what, you know, when Mr. Dickerson was talking about the fact that we haven't finalized it, that, those are the kind of things that we're still working through. But those, that is one date that we have been looking at, if that helps you.
Thank you, you too, Ms. Behringer. I'll go this way, Mr. Singletary.
Yes, I think most of us here are aware that Mr. Tim Stevens, through Show and Tell Industry Program, is able to get Garner on the schedule for the Walat Hills, the Vietnam Memorial replica that'll be coming here to Garner in April, April sixteenth through April nineteenth, out of Lake Vincent Park, coordination with the town, town staff, and the police, public works, Parks and Rec will be working with, with that. That memorial will be up in twenty-four hours a day, I believe, while it's down there, so I want to mention that. Also, they'll be in two other places in North Carolina in March. They'll be in Charlotte, March nineteenth through the twenty-second, and it'll also be in New Bern before it comes here, March twenty-sixth through March twenty-ninth. So it will be three locations that'll be in Garner, excuse me, in North Carolina, this, in March and April. So I want to mention that. I think that'll be very well received here when it, when it comes, and I'm sure we'll get more details as we get close. But anyway, I want to mention that, because I've got a friend who talked to me about it coming to New Bern, and just wanted to let people know, it's not only going to be in Garner, it will be in other areas in the state also, as I saw the half an hour.
Do we, while you mentioned his name, do we give a shout out to him for being selected to the, is it the North Carolina Sports Hall of Fame?
Sports Hall of Fame, yes.
Yeah, we did mention that, or?
We will now. He wrote, he worked for the News and Observer slash Raleigh Times for forty-five years or more, a long time.
Yeah.
Long as I can remember, so, yes. Mr. Tim Stevens will be in the North Carolina Sports Hall of Fame.
All that might ask him come to a council meeting. Received, okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Just one thing, just to, for, for the good of the group, the mayor and myself and John Hodges, we did attend the regional campo over in Apex. It was well-attended, and everybody was there from my hometown of Anger to Durham to Raleigh, from all around, and it was a learned experience from campo. We're used to the little regional thing, and quite a lot of interesting information got put out. We're going to have to work hard and make our case well-known, and, and if we, hopefully if we can do that, we can get some out of it. If we don't, we know the direction it's looking at going, but it was quite a meeting, very informative. It was packed, and so there's a lot going on in the greater Wake and surrounding counties, and a lot of them got the same issues that we've got, so we're not in this game by ourselves, so, but very good meeting, and enjoy being a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Yeah, the, apparently campo, I believe they have once a year a combined meeting of the adjoining, well, I'd say adjacent campos, the one from, I've forgotten the region, the Chapel Hill, Durham.
Chapel Hill, Carpera.
Right, okay, and, and then with, with ours here, so it was a good meeting, thank you. Mr. Vance?
Yes, in reference to the Jones sausage expansion, the additional lanes, I know last year there was a rest of six-month schedule, if I'm not mistaken, to have that, that area in front of the Amazon site, pleaded in six months, and do we have a status on that?
We do not at this time. I know they have started work. Last I have been told, contractor, which is ST Wooton, was still working with the owner to finalize this completion date.
I don't know if you've driven by there the last couple days, Mr. Vance, so they have gone for both sites. Clear vegetation there. Last week is, looks like a different place.
I will be glad to follow up.
I think it took longer for them to obtain right away, so that, is that what maybe delayed the project?
Well, that, the only right away, I guess, that is, that has been of concern as recently is, is more related to the Garner Road intersection, which is not part of the project that was started. So we'll follow up.
Good enough. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Dellinger. Last but not least, okay.
We've got nothing to say.
Okay, are you sure? No, no, no.
Don't give him a second chance.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 don't encourage him. Okay, that gets us to the portion of our agenda that I believe we need to have a closed session this evening in regards to an economic development issue. I don't know the statutory side, can you help us?
To discuss economic development pursuant to GS one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A four.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we go into...
Certainly.
Yeah, okay, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous, so we will adjourn to the closed session and be back after we finish that. Okay, I call the counsel back to order. Counsel went into closed session to discuss a matter with our Economic Development Director, and he received some instruction as to how he will proceed. We took no other formal action. So with that, I believe we finished our agenda, so if counsel's ready, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll be seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Thank you. We will be adjourned. Thank you all.